Okay, go ahead. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of September 11th, 2018. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Castleberry?
Here.
Councilmember Hickman?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Item number three is approval of the City Council's steady session minutes of July 17th, 2018, special session minutes of August 21st, and City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of August 28th, 2018. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Same sign. That was unanimous. Item number four is a proclamation proclaiming Saturday, September 30th, as St. Vincent de Paul Friends of the Poor Walk Day in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second?
Did I hear a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. That was unanimous. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Sunday, September 30th, as St. Vincent de Paul Friends for the Poor Walk Day in the city of Norman. Whereas the Society of St. Vincent de Paul is one of the largest and oldest service organizations in the world with conferences in Norman, Moore, and Purcell, and whose members provide help to people in need without regard to race, ethnicity, country or origin, or faith tradition; and whereas Oklahoma's first St. Vincent de Paul Friends of the Poor Walk took place in 2008 in Norman and now is in their 11th year, is the only Friends of the Poor Walk in the state; and whereas the South Central District Friends of the Poor Walk in Norman has no administrative overhead or paid staff, all proceeds from the walk are used locally throughout the year to help people in need, most of whom are families with children, seniors, the working poor, and persons with disabilities with rent or utility assistance, furniture, household items, and referrals services; and whereas the Society of St. Vincent de Paul partners with other local agencies such as food and shelter, including maintaining one of the McAllen Village cottages; and whereas in 2017, the South Central District of the Society of St. Vincent de Paul assisted 10,282 people in central Oklahoma with $303,973 in financial assistance and $33,521 in furniture. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Sunday, September 30th, 2018, as St. Vincent de Paul Friends of the Poor Walk Day in the city of Norman, and urge the citizens of Norman to attend and support the walk to be held, rain or shine, beginning at 2:00 at all St. schools, 4001 36th Avenue Northwest. And at this time would Lisa Schmidt come forward? I believe she's the co-chair of the walk. Thank you for all that you do for the community. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
On behalf of all of us who serve with St. Vincent de Paul here in Norman, many of whom are here tonight in their blue shirts, but more importantly, on behalf of the people that we help, we'd like to thank the city of Norman for your support in this, not only in supporting the walk and the work we do throughout the year, but as you know, we raise and spend money throughout the year helping people keep their heat on, keep their electricity going, keep a roof over their heads, prevent evictions that would be based on just a really simple financial emergency, but we also pay a lot of that money back to the city of Norman to help people keep their water on. And I just want to thank the people who are responsible for answering our calls when we meet with people late in the afternoon and we call the city of Norman and say, you know, I'm not going to get the check there today, but I'm with St. Vincent de Paul, I'm going to get the check there tomorrow, and they, every time that we ask for their help, if they could, they do everything that they can, and we really do appreciate that. You know, most of the people that we help, we're helping in for what, for most of us would be not even a crisis, they just need $75 or $100 to help them get past a car repair or an unexpected higher utility bill that can really set things off for the people that we're working with. And the people that we work with, as you know, are the greeters at Walmart, they're the health aides who are taking care of our parents and grandparents, they're the people who are serving our fast food, we just see them all over Norman. And in addition to trying to help with financial assistance and meeting with them to let them know that we're going to try as a community to help them, we also try to be their advocates, and we appreciate that you let us be a voice for the poor when we have that opportunity and when we have that responsibility. So thank you very much for your support and for letting us, letting everyone know about the Friends of the Poor Walk and know how welcome you would be if you were able to attend on Sunday afternoon on September 30th. Thank you so much.
All of you are very much appreciated, and thank you for coming out for this. Item number five is a proclamation proclaiming the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved?
Second?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Norman. Whereas September 17th, 2018, marks the 203rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which shall commemorate the occasion, whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. At this time, I ask that Sarah Poole come forward. You're the chaplain of the Black Beaver chapter of DAR. Well, thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, we appreciate this. This is one way that the daughters of the American Revolution helped to keep the ideals of our country, to keep it free, and with the standards that we have come to expect available to us in our lives. Thank you.
Item number six is a proclamation proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. That was unanimous. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming September 15th, 2018 through October 15th, 2018, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Week started in 1968 and was expanded to cover a 30-day period from September 15th through October 15th in 1988, and whereas the 2018 Hispanic Heritage Month National theme, Hispanics, One Endless Voice to Enhance Our Traditions invites reflection on Hispanic Americans' tradition, history, and culture. Whereas Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua celebrate the anniversary of their independence on September 15th, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and September 18th respectively, and whereas Norman is the home to people whose ancestry represents hundreds of nations, including Mexico, Spain, and the Spanish-speaking countries of Central America, South America, and the Caribbean; and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the array of district and vibrant culture that throughout the history of Norman, the state of Oklahoma, and our country have contributed to our prosperity and culture while energizing our diversity; and whereas it is necessary to increase awareness of and appreciation for the valuable and important contributions made by Hispanic Americans to our business, culture, cultural, and education communities. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating Hispanic culture, traditions, and achievements. And at this time, I'd like to ask Robert Ruiz to come forward. How are you? It's good to see you. Thank you so much. Want to say a few words?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say hi to all my old friends here. I see a lot of very familiar faces, and I'm, first of all, apologize for not having come here more often. I have lived here in Norman since 1997, and this is a wonderful community to raise a family and to be from, you know, a diverse multicultural background, and, you know, I think it's probably one of the best places in Oklahoma, I would say that with, with all confidence to be, you know, to exist in a multicultural community. So I also want to say what an honor it is for me to be here to receive this proclamation, and I want to thank the Human Rights Commission for their work and for helping to make this proclamation possible, and for all the work that the city attorneys and the city of Norman did to, and continue to do to make, to raise awareness for this month as well. And I want to tell everybody a little bit of a story because many people might not know this, but almost 20 years ago, Norman started a Hispanic heritage celebration here, and, you know, my wife and I were very lucky to be a part of that, and out of that grew many more celebrations. In fact, my nonprofit now hosts a couple of the largest festivals, there are 20,000 people-plus festivals that kind of grew out of that, and these celebrations are now statewide. So I think that that's another thing that Norman can be very proud of. I can't speak for all of the Hispanic community, the Hispanic community here is very diverse, people from all sorts of different backgrounds. I am fourth-generation Hispanic American here in the United States, and what I can speak to my experience is that even though being so separated from, from the native countries of my, both of my parents, you know, have heritage from Mexico, a lot, a lot of what my experience, and I would say maybe a lot of people in my situation, is that we, we search back for those roots, and we look for those opportunities to be able to live in that culture, to be able to learn about where we came from. And so just to be able to explore that heritage and having a month-long to be able to do that is very important to me, and I'm glad that I live in a community that values that as well. So I just wanted to say thank you again, and what an honor it is to be here. Appreciate it.
Item number seven is a resolution in conjunction with the Norman Animal Welfare Oversight Committee awarding the 2018 City of Norman Animal Welfare Volunteerism Award. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Same sign. This is a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, in conjunction with the Norman Animal Welfare Oversight Committee awarding the 2018 Norman Animal Welfare Volunteerism Award. Whereas the Norman Animal Welfare Oversight Committee seeks to promote pet adoption, the education, citizen involvement, and volunteer services for the Norman Animal Shelter and ensure all animals adopted at the Norman Animal Shelter are spayed and neutered; and whereas the programs instituted for the care of the animals involve citizens and coordination with other outside agencies in an effort to maximize adoption of the animals at the Norman Animal Shelter; and whereas the Norman Animal Shelter includes in its mission the involvement of citizens as partners to the caring of the animals when they are in the city facilities; and whereas the city of Norman entrusts the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee with the duties of providing advice to the city on issues involving the care of animals and citizen involvement; and whereas on May 23rd, 2016, the Norman Animal Welfare Oversight Committee unanimously approved to establish the Norman Animal Welfare Volunteerism Award and named Erica Loftus as the inaugural recipient. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, that the city of Norman in conjunction with the Norman Animal Welfare Oversight Committee does hereby award the 2018 Norman Animal Welfare Volunteer Award to Emily Flores and Mandy James. I think Kim. Emily, are you taking it for Emily? Okay, and Kim, if you will come forward and get the proclamation, and then I think, are you going to speak, or?
Yes, there's a few words from Councilmember.
Okay. Okay, all right, great.
We'll do this as sort of a three-part piece, and I'll try to make my part real quick. We want to honor Erica and a couple, and several of her family members, including her father, here to say a few words, and then we will mention, we'll give kind of a background on our two volunteers of the year.
Okay. Mr. Loftus, if you'd like to come up here and say a few words.
My name's Erica Loftus, I'm Erica Loftus's dad, and Erica was very well-known, very loved in the animal rescue community, and spent her life tirelessly, very tirelessly, helping get animals rescued and rehomed, and this word, this, our family, this award means a great deal to our family because it is her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to say a few words on behalf of Emily. I'm Mark Cowery, one of the co-chairs of the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee. Emily was not able to be with us this week, she's in California, but Emily has been a volunteer for several years down at the shelter, starting off first walking dogs, and then sort of building up to, oh, to socializing dogs, socializing cats, and then she became a foster, fostering and helping to bottle-feed puppies and bottle-feed kittens. She really has a passion for shy animals and for young animals. So, so we wanted to recognize her for her work in socializing animals, bottle-feeding, and just preparing animals to improve their chances for adoption. And I turn it over to Kim, who's going to talk about our other awardee, Mandy.
Thank you. As a member of the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee, it is my privilege tonight to present this award to Mandy James. Mandy's volunteer service began in 2013 when the EF5 tornado hit Moore. She volunteered at the Cleveland County Fairgrounds and assisted the American Humane National Organization with caring for the displaced pets. She spent many, many hours there at the Cleveland County Fairgrounds, helping reunite pets with families and caring for them. This experience led her for her passion for animals and the welfare of animals, and that's where we are today, and she has many volunteer services that she does within our community. She is a foster parent for several rescue groups and shelters, she is a moderator for the Norman Dog Park Facebook page, an admin for the Norman Area Lost, Found, and Adoptable Shelter Pets Facebook page, she's a board member, co-founder, and vice president of Mut Misfits Rescue, she is a volunteer for Hands Helping Paws Barn Cat and TNR program, she is a volunteer and a planning committee member for the Animal Welfare Expo, and she's also a volunteer and canine consultant for the Mutts Club, and the Mutts Club is an animal welfare educational youth program that we do here within our community. Mandy goes above and beyond on a daily basis and is always readily available for assistance to anyone that needs help. She can be found in a variety of shelter and rescue situations. Some of those rescue situations puts her in freezing temperatures, hiking in wooded areas in the dark, crawling in drainage ditches, and hanging out in dark alleys in order to rescue those scared, lost, and injured pets. So there is much more that this young lady has to offer to our community within her volunteer service and dedication to animals, and I hope I have given you a little bit of insight as to what she has contributed to our community, and she is very deserving of this award, and it is an honor to recognize her for her passion and service to our community. And I have, do you want to say a few words? Or? No. Okay. She's a little shy, but she is an extremely good asset to our community for the information resources, training, and things that she does for us, so I think we have some good recipients of this award, and I hope the family is proud of these presentations.
I think everybody recognizes that our animal welfare, our shelter would not be anywhere near what it is without all the wonderful volunteers that we have that help save and rescue and take care of and get adopted out, all of the animals, so many of the animals in our, and some of the volunteers that have been working forever, so thank you all, including some of the members of our council that have been really good volunteers. Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Mandy, and Kim, and Emily, and Mark, and all of you guys, and Mark, everybody that works with the shelter. It's probably really difficult to actually find somebody that goes above and above and above everybody else to present an award to, but I know that Mandy, I've worked closely with her, she's encouraged me to take litters of puppies in the past and, and help them out of other shelter situations, and as well Emily Flores, who's now in California, we're going to miss her deeply, but she has pushed me to take in Akita, I think she was the one, I mean, like, there's, these people are calling me, and they're, they're really the very best at getting the resources for these animals, and if there wasn't somebody doing it, they would just, they wouldn't have a voice, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Beerman?
So I started my city council career on the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee, and I was really proud to be able to help launch this volunteerism award program, and the two things that I think any volunteer that gets this award that Mandy and Emily both truly embody is longevity and stamina. To work with animals, especially in the way that Mandy does with the special needs animals that she fosters, it takes a lot of heart and it can have a lot of gratitude involved in it, and a lot of, but at the same time, it can also be incredibly difficult and incredibly painful to work at the shelter and see what the volunteers see on a daily basis. They do the best they can for these animals, and it can be extremely heartwarming and extremely gratifying, but it can also be extremely difficult, and Mandy has some of the, some of the deepest passion and the most stamina for this kind of work of just about anyone I've ever met. Kim mentioned, you know, the crawling in drainage ditches and stoking in dark alleys, and, you know, all of those things come with, I'm sure, a level of anxiety of wanting to make sure that you're doing the right thing for the animals that you're trying to rescue, and so I'm really glad that we have this award to help encourage more people to volunteer at our shelter and go, as Councilmember Wilson said, above and above and above and beyond, and I don't think anyone represents this award as much as, as much as Mandy and Emily do. So I'm really proud that you guys were able to receive this award and hope that we can encourage more people to do some of the work that you do because it really is invaluable.
This brings us to item eight, the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items nine through 26 on the Consent Docket.
So moved?
Second?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. That was unanimous. Item nine is an ordinance upon first reading granting special use for a church, temple, or other place of worship in the R3 multifamily dwelling district for property located at 2222 East Hayes Street. Item 10 is an ordinance upon first reading closing a 55-foot platted building line and establishing a 49-foot building line located in Lot 8, Block 1, Willow Brook Edition, 914 Timberdale Road. Item 11 is an ordinance upon first reading reducing the required percentage of annually budgeted expenditures to be appropriated to the emergency reserve account from 2% to 1%, and changing the minimum and maximum percentage of general fund expenditures to be held in the net revenue stabilization fund to 4% and 7%, and increasing the minimum amount in the net revenue stabilization fund from 3% to 4% of annually budgeted general fund expenditures. Item 12 is authorization for the purchase of the A submersible pump and motor in the amount of $44,260 from Evans Electric for lift station D. Item 13 is authorization for the purchase of two submersible pumps and motors in the amount of $31,085 from Automatic Engineering for the Summit Lakes Lift Station. Item 14 is an acceptance of a permanent public roadway drainage and utility easement from Asher and Robin Martinez in the amount of $4,700 for the 24th Avenue East Bond Project from Lindsay Street to Robinson Street. Item 15 is consent to encroach for Lot 22, Block 3, Summit Lakes Edition, 621 Summit Crest Lane. Item 16 is a special claim submitted by Daniela Flores in the amount of $3,269.53 for damages to her vehicle as a result of an accident with the front end loader while picking up debris during spring cleanup at 340 Wichita Drive. Item 17 is acceptance of a grant in the amount of $56,082 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs through the Office for Victims of Crime authorized under the Victims of Crime Act to be used by the Police Department to employ a victim advocate and provide associated equipment and budget appropriation from the Special Revenue Grant Fund. Item 18, change order number six to a contract with Archer Western Construction decreasing the contract amount by $72,545.83 for a revised contract amount of $52,000, oh, no, $52,154,160.17, and adding 61 calendar days to the contract for the water reclamation facility, face to improvements, and final acceptance of the project. Item 19 is amendment number four to a contract with RJN Group, Inc., increasing the contract by an amount not to exceed $169,398 to provide additional engineering, maintenance, repair, installation, and installation, and reporting services associated with permanent wastewater flow metering equipment at 18 locations throughout Norman through August 31, 2018. Item 20 is change order number two to a contract with Precision Concrete Cutting of Oklahoma, increasing the contract amount by $440.77 for a revised contract amount of $40,440.77 for the sidewalk horizontal saw cutting project. Final acceptance of the project and budget transfer. Item 21, change order one with Garden Depot, Inc., Lawn and Landscape Company, increasing the contract amount by $12,596 for a revised contract amount of $258,086.17 for the Lindsay Street Landscaping Project and final acceptance of the project. Item 22 is a contract with Clean Harbors Environmental Services in the amount of $102,000 to conduct the annual household hazardous waste collection event at Lloyd Noble Center on October 20, 2018. Item 23 is a contract with Cleveland Area Rapid Transit Kart in the amount of $35,000 as agreed upon under the 44th Year Community Development Lot Grant Program to provide bus passes to allow low-income residents, passes to low-income residents of Norman. Item 24 is a contract with the Norman Use Soccer Association for the use of Griffin Community Park for a period of five years. Item 25 is a contract with Friesen Nichols in the amount of $168,400 to provide engineering services related to final design bidding and construction administration for the Robinson Street Water Line Project from the water treatment plant to 24th Avenue Northeast. Item 26 is a contract with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments to provide funding of $10,400 as part of the Unified Planning Works Program for the collection of traffic data and preparation of travel time delay studies and budget appropriation from the Special Revenue Fund balance. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve. Second.
Are there any comments from the council regarding any item?
My question is for Chief Humphrey. I would like to know more about the position of the victim advocate and just what they'll be doing in our community.
My name's John Stegan with the Norman Police Department, the grant manager for the police department. We've requested this grant from the Department of Justice with the hope of better serving victims of crime, specifically violent crime. There are basically three avenues for advocacy, for criminal advocacy in the city. One of them is if you're a child victim of sexual assault, abuse, or neglect, then oftentimes there's advocacy for the child and the family through the Mary Abbott Children's House. Similarly, if you're the victim of sexual assault, stalking, rape, or domestic abuse, there's advocacy services through the Women's Resource Center. And then finally, if you're the victim of a violent crime, if a case goes to the DA's office, then the DA's office can provide advocacy services. That's about, that's less than 25% of our caseload. So when you're talking about other crimes, there's no advocate. There's nobody to help give a voice to the victims of those crimes. And so we requested this grant to fill in that gap for those individuals who suffer from being the victim of a crime yet have no one to help translate the process, walk them through the process, reach out and make sure they get the resources that they need, and somebody to help communicate their needs to the agency and other providers in the community.
When will this position begin?
The grant becomes effective October 1st.
Do you have, when has the hiring process begun?
We haven't started a hiring process until we get the grant approved.
So when does the timeline look like?
It's as quick as we can around October 1st. So, I mean, it's as quick as we can get it rolling and get it advertised, and a lot of that's beyond our control because it goes through HR and personnel.
And then how do you plan to advertise these services to future victims?
There's going to be, part of the milestones in the grant is the outreach program that this victim advocate has to do. So basically, the victim advocate's going to have access to our records management system, and so cases that come in, one of their milestones is to review those cases and reach out to those victims.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have an additional question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I kind of, this gives, is it a one-time grant or is it continued funding?
It's a year-to-year grant. Most of the VOCA grants are every year. So we have to reapply every year. According to, I'm sorry.
What's the likelihood that you wouldn't get it again, or what are the criteria? May I be concerned about hiring somebody and we get a one-year?
And that's going to have to be part of the hiring process. That's why we have to make clear is that this is a year-to-year grant. The state has funding for probably about two years of the grant. Beyond that, it depends on what Department of Justice gives. But they've, they can't commit for more than one year, but they have funding for more than one year.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, just to, Keith Humphrey, Chief of Police, just to kind of add on to what John said, he's pretty much touched on all of it. But about 97% of these programs throughout the nation when it comes to victims advocacy are initiated by grants. So that's how they start. And, you know, sometimes it's one year, sometimes it's two years, and then, you know, hopefully there's the funding to continue this program. But case in point, Oklahoma City, that's how they got started. They got started with a one-year grant, and then they reapplied, and they got another one. And so that's the main purpose. They hope that this grant kind of boosts this program to where cities, police departments will be able to hopefully absorb this into a full-time position.
So that's, the hope is that we'd be able to fund it as a city if we couldn't get the grant funding?
Yes, I mean, that's always, but when the advocates are hired, they understand that especially, it takes a special person to do this job, and they understand the grant process. So they understand that this is, when they accept this job, even, and it'll be in the description, that this is based on an annual grant. So when they get hired, they know that you have to continue to work hard to try to, and so the implementation of the program, keeping the numbers, things like that, helps boost your chances of getting this for another year. So this is how the program starts.
Do we have other positions, maybe city manager, that are funded through grants? I'm just curious.
We've had, we've had a couple funds, I think the question is now. Oh, now? Not with us.
No.
No, but we've had some that have started off funding by grants.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions?
If I can follow up real quick with that. I mentioned those other advocacy groups, the Women's Resource Center, the Mary Abbott House, and the District Attorney's Office. Their advocates are funded mostly through VOCA, and they're year-to-year grants as In, as the chief said, in this area of work, it is, our hope would be that we can eventually absorb the cost once we see the benefit to the community, once we can actually measure those milestones, so that we aren't relying on some potential funding that could go away.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you very much. Being known more, comments, motion on the floor. Okay, is it Joe?
Yeah.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes, I just had, want to make a comment to those that might be watching or listening that I'd had a lot of people reach out to me, constituents reach out about item 11, the finance emergency funding component. And I was advised by Ms. Hall that the proper time to debate that or remove it. As a newbie here, I'm going to take her advice and not do that, but I just don't want our constituents to think that I did not listen to their concerns about that, and we'll move forward.
Many times when I, a lot of times, the public doesn't understand that first reading, we don't, we don't have comments and talk about first readings. And one of the, and since people get used to it when we say, we don't talk about it at first reading, then if we do start talking about them, then the people that might be interested in them wouldn't be here. So that's, this is common, this is what we've been doing for 20 years, I guess. So you will be able to discuss it when it comes back. Councilmember Hickman. Nope. Okay. That brings us to, oh, no, we didn't vote. All right. Let's try to get this finished. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the consent docket is approved unanimously.
That brings us to off consent. Item 27 is a resolution declaring a recoupment project for costs associated with the improvements to Rock Creek Road and Arterial Road from 36th Avenue Northwest to Grandview Avenue. This item was postponed in the city council's meeting of June 26 and August 14, with a motion to adopt and a motion to amend to remove parcels three, four, and five on the floor. At this time, would Beth Mukala come forward to make the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Miller and council. I'm Beth Mukala, Assistant City Attorney for the City of Norman. And so again, as Mayor Miller explained, we were here before on June 26, and I'll just give you another highlight of the recoupment process. It's designed, it's utilized when road improvement occurs before development, which triggers Chapter 19 development under our code. And it applies to properties that have not developed under Chapter 19, which means they have not ultimately dedicated the required easements and rights of way pursuant to the plating process at the time the road improvement occurs. And after that, and completion improvements, if the property then further develops for a more intense use that does invoke Chapter 19, then that developer would be subject to recoupment. And this, of course, is, this process was set up several years ago, of course, to level the playing field and correct an inequity that would occur where someone has been paid for rights of way and then later develops to take advantage of the benefit of those road improvements. And so this is the first step in the recoupment process, which is declaring the project and identifying the parcels that are subject to it. Attached as exhibits A and B to the resolution are a map and list, which identify pictorially the parcels as well as the listed owners. And once the project is completed, the second step will be to update the map and list to represent the pro-rata share and right-of-way costs attributable to each parcel that's part of the recoupment project, which will then be filed with the city clerk and the court clerk against the parcel to identify that cost with the parcel. And then in the 20 years following completion of the improvements and the filing of that map and list, 100% of that participation cost may be recouped by the city plus a 2% administrative fee. And, I'm sorry, that's for the first 15 years, that 100% may be recouped. And then following that 15-year mark, it reduces by 20% per year until ultimately extinguished at the 20-year mark. And city engineer Scott Sturz showed you this map back in June, but this demonstrates how this mile that we're talking about for this project is essentially the last mile that needs to be addressed as far as widening. I understand that recently bike lanes were painted between Grandview to the west out to 48th, and these road improvements will tie in to those now existing bike lanes. And so, I'm sorry, that says June 12, but of course, at the June 26 meeting, one property owner did object to recoupment, and specifically, they indicated they weren't subject to the process because their parcel had previously dedicated right-of-way to the city. And so questions were addressed at that time, but ultimately, this resolution was postponed to August 14, and then, of course, again, to tonight. And during that time, city staff has met with that parcel owner to discuss their concerns and to try to resolve this, and ultimately, to try to locate the conveyances of record that they believed already existed. And ultimately, we were unable to locate those conveyances. The property owner as well was not able to. And in light of that, the parcel owner agreed to donate the right-of-way that was listed for the project. And so by donating that, it is consistent with a short form plat that had previously been filed for the property, and that completes their plating process. And as mentioned before, now that they have platted and dedicated, they are now effectively removed from the scope of the recoupment ordinance. And I'll show you what the project looks like now. That was parcel four. At the time that this resolution was eventually postponed on June 26, the motion on the floor was to remove all the residential parcels, which are three, four, and five, from the recoupment project. And a question was posed to city staff regarding the applicability of the recoupment ordinance to residential parcels. Following that postponement, a study session was held on July 17, where the interplay between the development ordinances of the city code as well as the recoupment ordinance was discussed in detail, and it was explained that the requirement and the responsibility to dedicate rights of way and easements to developing parcel owners is applicable under both state statute and our city ordinance to all parcels, including residential parcels. And so with that explanation and having resolved the issue as to parcel four, it is staff's recommendation that parcel four be removed from the recoupment project, and that the recoupment project does proceed as to parcels three and five and eight, as demonstrated here. And here is a list of the property owners.
Was eight on the first time? No. So we have to change that.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Councilmember Castleberry.
Thank you, Beth, for your presentation. I appreciate the work that you did. I know we had a meeting with the property owners, and as the meeting goes all over the place, stuff like this, I appreciate you bringing it back around and solving this question for my constituents and avoiding any possible litigation and coming up to a resolution that's good for the citizens, good for the city. We've got, we've got the right-of-way, they don't have a recoupment district, so I appreciate you and my councilmembers for allowing us to postpone this issue so we could work it out to everybody's satisfaction. So with that, I'd like to amend my amendment and take property number four off, so that we're only talking about properties three, five, and eight, since property four doesn't apply anymore. Did I say that right?
Okay. We had a second to your original amendment was, Councilmember Hickman, are you okay with that?
Quarter corridor.
I'm almost out of Diet Coke.
Yes, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. Okay. We're all right.
It's actually, it's actually an amendment for the body, so it really doesn't take a second, but you just posted that. You got to read your own post.
Okay. Any comments or questions about the amendment? Audience comments or questions? Okay, now. Okay, now. Okay, so I'm gonna have Robert read his amendment out loud. Read your amendment, so we know what we're voting on.
Do I have an amendment? I'm just, I'm changing my amendment to remove property four from the recoupment district.
Okay, so we are going to go ahead and we are amending this to vote on properties three, five, and eight. Oh, three and five, eight stayed on. I'm sorry, I'm very confused. Yes.
What councilmember Castleberry was attempting to do was to offer a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor and remove parcel four. And with concurrence of the second, councilmember Hickman, that friendly amendment has, has taken place. So now the motion on the floor for council's consideration is to amend the resolution to remove parcels three and five from the assessment plat.
No, no, you're only removing.
I mean, excuse me, just the opposite, removing parcel four from the assessment plat.
So we're only voting to amend by removing property four?
Right.
Okay. Does everybody know what we're voting on? I think I know now. Yes.
What's now been described that's being recommended by staff?
Right, that is right.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, any more comments or questions for, Mr. Bryant, do you want to make any more comments or we're okay now? Okay, all right. Motion on the floor is to amend the resolution by removing parcel four. Everybody in a favor? Are we, are we voting on it? Okay. Everybody opposed? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I just totally got confused on this one. Yes, so if the amendment passes, so that brings us to the amended resolution, which is declaring a recoupment project for costs associated with the improvements to Rock Creek Road and Arterial Road from 36th Avenue Northwest to Grandview Avenue, which will include parcels three, five, and eight. Any, any questions or comments on the resolution itself? Okay. Audience, any comments or questions? Are you sure? The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution as amended. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
It passes unanimously, the resolution is approved as amended.
This brings us to item 28, miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole in five minutes or less.
Oh, good evening. I missed you all two weeks ago. Shame on me. Shame on me, shame on me. Coming here is, is really fulfilling for me. I find that whenever I get to come here and speak, I get to have all of your attention for a little while, and I appreciate you giving me that. You know, I really do. There's nothing that mandates you to care about what I have to say, but you have to look like you care a little bit, and that's more than most. Let me first make some qualifications and clarifications. I've been trying to figure out the best sequence, excuse me, for, for utilizing my five minutes. Four weeks ago, Robert and I freestyled a little song. I made some generalizations that were not accurate. I did know that Kyler Murray was the quarterback and that he had just received a $4.7 million signing bonus, Million Dollar Murray. He's definitely earning it in different ways. I also mentioned something about how spectacle will take our wealth, and I don't think that's totally true. I think spectacle is a way for people to come together and an innumerable amount of business deals and relationships are formed, and there's a lot that spectacle contributes that is positive. But it's all about those ratios. All right, so that's qualification, the clarifications. The next thing that I forgot to talk about four weeks ago was advocacy. I had a friend of mine here, John Rushton. Guy, he's a, he's an activist, he's a nurse, he's a permaculture certified designer, he works like 65 hours a week, and he had shown up at my request, and I got through with my five minutes and I didn't even realize that I hadn't even talked about him. I hadn't talked about how, and the stormwater utility fee vote's coming up and how I think that Sean needs to have these dedicated funds, but within those dedicated funds, we need to have dedicated funds for all these people who are, who are just so humble that they don't draw attention to themselves. Like, like Bergy Wind, Bergy Wind's been here for 30-plus years in fossil fuel Oklahoma without incentives. How are they surviving? They have, they've sold turbines all over the world. Soldiers in Afghanistan have been able to communicate because of the cell towers that they've powered. We need to do more to help companies and individuals like that who have been behaving in this righteous way without us, without asking for special treatment or subsidies or incentives. Now, Earth Rebirth is another group. At that, at the film festival, they had all these chairs and this projector and these, you know, placards and everything else, and 10, 15 people showed up. It was something, but think about the amount of time and energy devoted to packing up and unloading and setting up. These are individuals who deserve our acclaim and our laudatory reciprocity for their sacrifices. So advocacy, done. This is September 11th. Huh. Gosh, 17 years ago. I remember, I, I was, I self-handicapped myself all through adolescence, never, didn't really want to face the world, wanted to just kind of hide from the world. God made me so tall that I couldn't hide these anti-archetypal features or anything. And I was on my back that morning. I was laid up and pretty much my entire adult life was transformed by that event. And war on terror, it's been going on for a long time, and it will always go along, go on, right? What does that mean, the war on terror? I think what it fundamentally means is a war on extremism. It's a war on fundamentalist psychosis, not just in Saudi Arabia, but here too. If there are individuals who are a part of religious institutions or mega churches in which you have a literalist interpretation of the Bible, but yet you want to deny all of the scientific achievements that have enabled you to have the power of a cellphone and the internet in the palm of your hand, I'm sorry, that is a type of
This is when you detach yourself from the building. That is a level of cognitive dissonance that is so destructive and corrosive, not only for the individual to strive for
Evan, you have to finish. Your, your time's up, you have to finish. I'm sorry.
This is all the time that you think these ideas deserve?
They, they may deserve lots more time, but at the city council meeting, the time's up.
Who else?
Thank you.
Dr. Husky?
Bob Husky, 3615 Chinam Court, Ward Three. There was an article in the paper. I liked it because it said Norman is number two. Out on a list of 10 cities, small cities, actually, or not very big in some regard, saying that the money goes further here for people thinking about retirement or in retirement. I think Mr. Castleberry even liked it, certainly the mayor did, and Scott Martin and a few others. And I thought it was really interesting because I was thinking about how we could really capitalize on this. What we could do, you see, is to build this super innovative, state-of-the-art, world-class senior center as a regional draw and bring all these wonderful retired folks, many of whom aren't poor. They don't have to worry so much about the fact that money goes a long way here. In fact, that's one of the reasons I came here. My son said, hey, Dad, it's cheaper here. Well, to some degree, he was wrong. South Side, Virginia is a pretty poor place, actually, and in some regards, much poorer than this part of Oklahoma. But that doesn't matter, I'm happy here. I grew up here. Then I lost my way for some 30 to 40 years in other parts of these wonderful states. In any regard, I think it really should be thought about here as a way to make Norman a significant place in terms of this regional draw and capitalize on this. Now, I don't know, this is not a great publication. It's a private investment firm, I think it's, it's House Oregon. But it's still interesting because they did go to some trouble to measure things about how much it costs to live in various places. David ranked states. Yeah, Oklahoma ranks second from the bottom, but that's really says, it's a cheap place to live. Let's get more people here, huh? And how do we attract them? It's a good place to retire.
Any comments? I am going to forego council comments tonight. Really, really need to make any, but keep it brief, all right? Councilmember Scott?
For Ward Eight watchers, I want to host the next ward meeting on Sunday, September 30th, so the last day of the month, last Sunday of the month, at the Eastside Library. I don't have a set time yet, but I'm trying to solicit agenda items because I received some feedback last time that we want to condense the meetings and have the agenda items beforehand. So please, if you're watching, send those my way. And Evan, you inspired me, I wrote you a haiku to wrap up what you were saying. Love thy enemy, while hate occupies the mind, we are divided. That's all.
Councilmember Clark?
I have a couple of events to announce. In spirit of the Hispanic Heritage Month, there will actually be a Hispanic Heritage Night on Thursday, September 18th, at the East Branch Library from 4:30 to 6:00. There will be food to sample, dancers, crafts, it'll be a good thing. We also have our very first event in, what? Thursday, September 18th. That's what was sent to me. Thursday, the 20th, then, must be correct. I'll double check that. But another event coming up on Thursday, the 20th, is the beloved Community Speaker Series. I'm very excited to work with the mayor and the Human Rights Commission to have the City of Norman participating in that. We've also got Norman Public Schools, Norman, the Pioneer Library System, the Xenia Institute, a lot of community partners in this, and the OU Office of University Community. We will discuss four different topics at four different events. The first one, again, is Thursday, September 20th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Meacham Auditorium. And the topic we will discuss is the history of Norman. We're going to have Dr. George Henderson, Mary Lou Drywater, and Paula Shunauer, and Newman Jan, talking about the perspectives from the African-American, Native American, LGBTQ, and Middle Eastern descent communities. So I'm very excited about that. It will continue the important discussions that I think the DeBar debate kind of kicked off in Norman, and those are important conversations that we need to continue. And another thing that I want to mention, because I was not here for the study session, I was visiting my father abroad for his birthday. I know that the CART discussions are very heated, and there is no decision on how we're going to address OU's demand that we cut services and eventually separate. I would point out that one of the options thrown out was cutting off service to CART Access Zone Two. And if you look at that map, that is the majority of Ward Six. So you are taking away already limited public transportation, from last time I checked with the city manager, the largest or highest populated ward in the City of Norman. And that is not fair to my residents, and it is unconscionable for us to get this kind of demand to separate after a 30-year partnership. I would suggest that the administration of the University of Oklahoma follow the example of the student government and try to build relationships with the City of Norman as opposed to tear them apart.
Councilmember Hickman?
I just have a couple of real brief announcements. Friday night, September 14th, is Art Walk in lovely downtown Norman and in Ward Four, so please come down and shop Norman. Lots of wonderful activities going on at some of the various merchants. Saturday, the 15th, our City of Festivals events continue, as well as OU football's out of town. You can come out and enjoy the Norman Film Festival. Lots of venues and activities going on on Saturday for the film festivals. This is the second year I was able to go last year to some of their events, and it is an amazing time, and I encourage you to come down and support the Norman Film Festival. And that morning of the 15th, you can have Coffee with a Cop at the Central Library from 9:00 to 10:30. So for those of you who can't make it sometimes during the weekday, please come on that Saturday morning, and you can have Coffee with a Cop and learn a little bit more about our community-oriented policing. Those are always a wonderful time. And then finally, on Monday, the 17th, I will be hosting a community forum for Ward Four that's open to the public, anybody who wants to come, here at City Hall. That will be from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. So if you're interested in coming, and there'll be opportunity for questions and answers to come down and learn a little bit about what we've been doing and ask me some questions, and there'll be staff members here as well. That is Monday, the 17th, from 6:08 to 8:00 at City Hall, so I encourage you to come down for that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Beerman?
I'll make it very fast. Last night, the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee meeting included some topics that I would love to get some feedback on from the community because it will be coming to city council. We've been talking about spay-neuter requirements, bans on tethering, addressing animals used as entertainment, addressing animals being given away as prizes. It was a very lively and heated discussion, there were lots of feelings on all sides, but I would love to get some feedback before anything like that moves forward. These are important topics, and yes, animals are property in this state, but they are property that can suffer. And so I would like to get some feedback from the community about how we should move forward with some of these laws. And lastly, this is happening two days after our next city council meeting, but I want to give people some time to plan for the next CPTC committee meeting, in which we will, we will be discussing diaper-changing table requirements in commercial properties. As of now, if they are available, they are located in women's rooms only, and that is very rare, and they are often in handicap stalls, which, so there are a number of concerns about that and something I would like to see addressed. It's also an issue of inclusivity. My husband does not like the fact that if he wants to help me change my child's diaper, he has to bring her out to the car because he cannot go into the women's room. So that will be on September 27th. I will make another shout out at the next city council meeting, which is just a couple days before this meeting, but this is an important way that we can continue to promote Norman as a family-friendly community, and I would love to see people attend and give me feedback on that as well.
Councilmember Carter?
One quick one. Legends is celebrated, I think any, any business that reaches a 50-year milestone is very remarkable, and the fact that Legends has done it on Lindsay Street, where we've seen two more businesses close, you know, or announced their closing in the last couple of weeks. But it's this Saturday from 3:00 to 5:00, the Legends 50th anniversary party, and everyone's invited to attend.
Councilmember Clark?
I just wanted to clarify that the Hispanic Heritage Event at the East Branch Library is Tuesday, the 18th, to make sure nobody misses that, 4:30 to 6:00.
This brings us to item 29. Adjoining into executive session is authorized by Oklahoma Statutes Title 24 statutes Title 25307B1, Norman City Charter, Article 3, Section 6, to continue discussion initiated on August 21st, 2018, whether or not to direct the city manager to investigate the city attorney. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of city council meeting and convene into executive session to continue the discussion.
So moved.
On August 21st.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to adjourn out of city council meeting and convene into executive session. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Councilmembers, you may move to the study session.